Okay, so we'll start the meeting. Welcome to Hadley Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Regular meeting agenda. Today's June 4th, 2024. It's 11:05 AM. And we're at the Golden Court Community Room. We're going to have, okay, so the first on the agenda is topics not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So the first thing is, our executive director is delayed. She's working on a situation. And so we're going to go ahead and proceed with the agenda, but some things might be out of order. We're also going to add a topic that I just found out about that has to do with RCAT. And our executive director Pamela Rogers will address that when she arrives. So the first thing on the agenda after that, unless you all have any other topics not reasonably anticipated?
No, I am.
So first will be approval of the minutes. So the minutes, the first minutes we will work on approving is Tuesday, April 9th. And can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion. We have first.
Sue, would you like the second?
First.
Second. Sue, first. And then we'll, we'll do what I have introduced. Well, I'll start at my left and then every person, at least once, if not twice, if not three times, will get a chance to ask questions and comments.
Yeah, so on page three of the April 9th, 2024 minutes. Administration fee for project 117082.
Where are you at on the page?
The very bottom paragraph.
Oh, bottom paragraph, okay, I see.
It says, "Administration fee for project number 117082. Pamela Rogers explained that this is the first time we are being asked to do this, which has to do with the keeping 10% above the contract amount, which is going to Amherst Housing." Well, the first time, how did this come about? I wanted to know more. If it's the first time, was it something that was discussed with DHCD? Or was it something that was discussed in contracts?
Okay.
Because it talks about the first time this is happening.
Okay.
I'd like to know more, a little bit more clarity.
Did you, because we're approving minutes right now.
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
So do you want me to add back to?
I want to add that to.
Items for future agenda.
Right.
Explanation of administrative fee.
Yes. Not, not, not the fact that they're allowed to have 10% above the contract amount, but just the fact that it's the first time. And who initiated this first time? Is it, did it come from the governor's office? Did it come from DHCD? I mean, where did it?
I think she already explained that.
Well, that I'm not clear about, and I'd like to.
Okay, so read, read through that. This is, they're implementing new guidelines. It says right there.
Right.
And we had to fill out a form. She says right there.
But in other words, is this something that's across the board in Massachusetts? Anybody?
That was my understanding.
That's what I wanted to know.
My understanding.
Yeah, this is a new thing.
It's not just Hadley that has to vote.
No, it's Executive Office for Housing and Livable Communities. This is a new rule and reg that came out with.
Yes, are we going to be seeing this new rule or is it going to be written?
I, I don't understand.
I see this.
Everything comes out eventually on public housing administration notices, but we're digressing away from, do you have any corrections or additions or anything like that?
Just the, the fact that Housing Authority management is certified under Mass-Narrow and administrator certificates, seven courses. Is this something that's new also, as I wanted to know?
No.
That they have to be.
Well, I can, that's again, and an agenda topic, but I believe that's been around for quite some time. And some executive directors will get their housing, they'll get themselves and their housing authority staff certified in their area of expertise. But I mean, I just want to give you a quick answer so we don't have to add this to a future agenda, but that's not approval of the minutes.
Okay.
Anything else on the minutes of Tuesday, April 9th? Sue?
Looking through here, making sure I, I'm looking at my notes. Nope, I guess we're all set.
Okay. So Rich, I'll, I'll come to you after I have my little correction thing. So Pam, on the first sentence under regular meeting, open the, it says, "Open the vote." It should say, "Meeting."
For, where on page one?
April 9th, right under regular meeting call to order, the first sentence, it should say, "Open the meeting" instead of, "Opened the vote." There's a couple of other, like, misfeelings or whatever. It's not worth going to. It's very understandable. So on page three, down to the bottom, it says, and this is just a transcription kind of thing. So the third line from the bottom, it says, "Or additional expenses that the housing authority," it says, "occurs," it should say, say, "incurs." Not that it, I think most everybody would understand what it really said. In the middle of the page, on page four, let's see, it says, "The management agreement does not cover director of facilities, CPA grants, things of that, doesn't cover food." Sue Oppenheimer, it says, "Sue Oppenheimer aid." It should say, "said." And I think most people could figure that out when they read it, but. And then, let's see, I didn't number these paragraphs, but, okay, so about three quarters of the way down, it says, "Pamela Rogers explained that so we earmarked this towards a new fee." It should read, "vehicle." And at the end of that paragraph, it should also say, "Towards a new vehicle" instead of, "Upwards a new fee." Everything else is just silly stuff, so. Okay, that's all I have. Rich?
I should be on second.
Okay. Sue? Nothing more? I have nothing more, Rich? Nothing more? Okay, so I'll call for the vote?
Approved.
Okay, and I approve, okay. Three to zero. The minutes of Tuesday, April 9th. Okay, so now we're on to the minutes from Tuesday, April 30th. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Sue, would you like the second?
Second.
Discussion, Sue?
I'm looking at my notes right here. The only thing is, is like I brought up before, to add to the agenda, even though you're not asking, to know more about this new group that you and Pam are forming to manage possibly new housing for seniors in Hadley.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
Or under board correspondence.
Okay, what page?
Page number three, saying that Pam and I have been invited by Housing and Economic Development Committee to purposes, to present new rules and regs coming out of the state and create a pathway, and then possibly creating new housing. Will you keep us apprised of how, as a board, of what's transpiring with this?
Well, yeah, this is all in your public housing administrative, administrative notices, but this is specifically to approve minutes, so if you need.
Right.
If you want, I cannot explain everything to you during approval of minutes.
Right.
If you want me to add it for items for future.
I want to add it to.
Okay, housing, I'm going to put in, housing initiatives.
And give us more detail on that.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else?
Nothing else.
And by the way, there was nothing in here about forming a group. I don't agree with you on that, so, but whatever. I have nothing on these.
No, Rich, nothing, no.
Call nothing on?
More, then I'll call for the vote.
Approved.
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 Okay, so that's three to zero for approval of the minutes from April 30th, 2024. Now, Pamela Rogers has not yet arrived, so we can go ahead and do the warrant report. Rich, would you like to present?
On the warrant report, the comparable transaction between 4-424 and 4-424.
And the amount?
Have they looked it over?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sue, make a motion?
Make a motion, approve, the amount of, I believe, total report, $18,000.
No, for that 4-24, it's 23.
Who?
It's 23,000. See down there?
Early.
Here it goes, the second page.
I got it right here, 28,000, 62.77.
That's it. Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Sue?
No discussion.
No discussion.
And I have no discussion either. Do I need to go around again? Sue has nothing, Rich has something, I have nothing. I'll call for the vote?
Approved.
Approved. Approval of the warrant report for 4-24 is approved three to zero. Rich?
No, warrant, comparable transaction between 4-1824 and 4-1824.
In the amount of?
This is the one that was, 18,539.66.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Sue?
No discussion.
I have no discussion, Rich.
Right here.
All right, then I'll call for the vote.
Okay, ruled.
Approved, approved, three approvals, okay. So the motion carries for, for the warrant report for 4-1824 in the amount of 18,539.66. Moving right along to treasurer's report. This is not a voteable report. Rich, would you like to present?
On a treasury report, have you looked at it?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Yes, I do have questions. I want, under modernization, funds paid, not reimbursed, reimbursement received, not paid, can, that whole little paragraph there, can you explain that a little bit more?
Rich, would you like me to explain that?
You better explain this.
Yeah, I think we talked about that the last meeting. So we have received reimbursements for various modernization projects from the state, and as of April 30th, those monies have not been paid out, okay? Then we have modern admin received but not paid, and those are zero, okay? So the reimbursement, is, do I have that kind of right, Pam? I'm going to ask you.
I can't tell you that.
Then let's set this aside, and we will ask Pamela when she gets here.
She should be here any minute.
Any minute, yeah. Okay, and also with that is the monthly income and expenses is also part of the treasurer's report. Maybe we can get through this. Sue, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
I have no questions?
No questions, no.
All right, then we're okay with that portion. I'm going to set it right next to the, in case you come up with anything, any of us come up with anything else. Okay, now the, there's a, we're going to take things out of order, and that will be the capital, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, unit vacancy report. Sue?
Find the paper.
It's right in back of that treasurer's report. There you go.
As of 5/17/2024, 667, which is the senior part of Golden Court, has four apartments that are vacant. There was five, but we just had somebody recently move in. And 705 Berks Way, which is the family unit, has two vacancies.
Okay, so I'm going to just say that as of 5/17/2024, according to this report, there were five vacancies, but we just know that someone moved in, otherwise we wouldn't, to the 667, so otherwise we would still have five vacancies. And do you want to make comments about the other four units being under capital improvement?
You can do that.
Okay, so we have four units at Golden Court that are under capital improvement, and two at Berks Way that are under capital improvement. So a total of six apartments that are under capital improvement. They cannot be rented out until that work is complete. So that's why we have vacancies right now.
Okay.
Yeah. So that is not a voteable. Okay, so the next thing is the tenant accounts receivable. I'll go ahead and do that. So as of, this is for April, because we're actually, this is our May meeting that got delayed till today. So the tenant's account receivable report is money that tenants owe us, and the subtotal for that money is $9,798.41. I'm looking to see, because in April, we, we voted for a write-off, and that is reflected in here. So see, on the 667s, we had $10,833.62 written off in April. We did that at, I believe it was the April 30th, maybe it might have been April 9th. But, and we do write-offs if someone has moved out, if they've passed away or moved out to a nursing home or, and we can't collect that money. There's, there's no way. So, so the state has given us a way to write off that amount, because it really is uncollectible. There's other, there's other money owed that is collectible, and we're empowering, hey, Pamela's here, welcome.
So sorry.
No, it's okay. Work is work. Situations are situations. So we're on tenant's account receivable, and I think we're probably pretty much done with it. This is not a voteable report, but Sue, do you have any questions?
Once something is written off, can it ever be opened up again? And, you know, some procedure where you go after money at a further date?
So we're write-off? So when we do write it off, we do actually continue to go after it. It's just that it comes off of this part of the books and it goes, goes into collectibles. So it comes, it comes out of tenant accounts receivable and goes into another underlying account, but we absolutely still work it to recover the money.
And my other question, is there a statute of limitations on going after rent? I mean, in other words, is it like a seven-year statute of limitation? Or is it continual, you can go after rent continuously till you get, hopefully get rent from the tenant? Is there a?
I have to tell you, I don't know that, I don't know that answer, but I will get that for you and get back to you Monday.
Okay. Good question.
Do you have any more questions, Sue?
No questions.
I have no questions.
Not any.
All right.
Should I go back to the part you missed with her?
No, that's what we're going to do now.
Okay.
Okay, so we got all the way down to through tenant's account receivable, except for, Sue has some questions on the treasurer's report, so. Do you need a minute? Because we can go ahead and do work orders.
Yes, you want, I'll pack them.
So let's do work orders. Rich, do you want to do work orders, or do you want me to do work orders?
Oh, yeah, do it, look at them, right?
You look at them, okay. Have you looked at the work orders? It's not a voteable report. So Sue, do you have any questions about work orders?
No questions.
I don't either, Rich?
I'm just looking at work right here.
I'll just say that the, the requests are being, you know, the tenant-generated requests are being completed pretty darn quick. What, I'm looking at the date it was requested and the date the work was completed, and it's so fast. The, some of them, it looks like it's a little slower, because they have, you know, if it was reported on a Friday, they're not going to get there to fix it until the Thursday, which is the day. But, so things are getting fixed really fast, according to our, you know, the way that you've got maintenance organized. It looks very organized here.
Thank you.
And things are getting done? It's wonderful. Okay. Sue, any, any questions?
No questions.
I have nothing more?
Nothing here.
Rich? Okay.
Do you want to say?
You're all set? Okay, so the treasurer's report, Sue, you have some questions?
Are we here?
Treasurer's report?
No, just under, under modernization on the first page, April 30th, 2024. I just wonder why funds paid and not reimbursed, reimbursed received and not paid, and, and modernization administrative received not paid. I wonder why is that under modernization?
That would be any of the capital money that we receive. So if we were, for, for a project, if we paid out for that project, like we are, we have been paying out some designer fees and architect fees, or even a basement fees, and we haven't been reimbursed yet from EOHLC. Okay, so that's why you're seeing it that way.
The way it was written, that's why I was trying to figure it out.
Okay, so you're right. I mean, there are so many of these things that have a backstory, and it looks weird unless you know the backstory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can understand a big project, like a window project being considered modernization, but I didn't know if you were putting humanities in and that was considered modernization.
No, no, the windows is, we modernized the windows.
Right.
And they're gorgeous.
So that's actually a good, another good point, too, is that, so lots of times we do capitals, capital modernization stuff in-house, but when it falls under that modernization account, that's when it's truly just coming from that capital money, that, that other pool of money outside of our budget. So that's where you're seeing that.
State stuff.
Yeah.
Grant stuff. All right.
Do you have any further questions?
I just, do we do 5, 9, 20, do we do this page yet? That's the only one that I'm still holding in my hand.
No, no, that's the, that Pamela's going to get that. So you don't have anything more on the treasurer's report, which also includes the monthly income and expenses?
Yeah.
Rich, anything?
Nothing.
I have nothing. Pamela, so we're down to capital report now.
Like I said, great without me, I'm so proud of you.
So the, we're to this part of the capital report.
Okay, I'm not sure why we have that in there, but, so that's nothing. That looks like it's a, it's an old thing.
Don't wear that.
Yeah, that's, so just for capital, the only thing I have is.
Actually, I think that's part of the treasurer's report, because we have, I think that's what it is. So it's just part of the treasurer's report. There's nothing new or different. So the next thing was, was our topics not reasonably anticipated that has to do with RCAT.
Yes, and our chimney project.
And that will be a voteable item, right?
It is, yes.
So we need to listen up, because we just found out about that this morning.
Yes, yes, so I found out, so I was kind of sort of, but not really, on a staycation last week, but I found out late in the week that our chimney project, so we had a pre-construction meeting. You folks had awarded the project to a local, I think they're right out of Amherst. Are they have, okay, because I got different, okay. Great quote, great company, a great bid. They were going to be doing the chimneys in, in the buildings. And then after the pre-con meeting, the RCAT, which is the Regional Capital Assistance Team, figured out or became aware of that they did not, it's on that date, they did not properly procure the bid.
RCAT did not.
RCAT did not. So RCAT did, they put it in, let's see, the procurement of project 117084, ARPA chimney repairs at Golden Court valued at, requires advertisement of, on jurisdiction website, we did, combines, we did, in the central registry, we did, and posted on the Hadley Housing Authority website, we did. One of the requirements not met was an email to a minimum of three vendors to perform the work. He missed doing that, RCAT missed doing that. We did get five bids. We had one person come and walk through, and we got five sealed bids. And then, and he canceled the project. I desperately tried to save the project, because I think everyone did their due diligence, and this was an unfortunate mistake, and with five bids, clearly people understood that it was out there. The Attorney General's office got involved, and I called Worcester Housing Authority, which oversees the RCAT program for our area. And unfortunately, they're recommending, recommending that we, we do cancel the bid, the contract, and rebid it.
So it was an RCAT accident, so.
But when an accident happens like that, is the person who makes the mistake can reapply and hopefully not make that mistake again, or they pushed that?
No, RCAT made the mistake.
Yeah, it's not the contractor didn't make it, but no, they could, absolutely, everybody that applied before, which is why I did not read the value, because if they were sealed bids, and I think it should stay sealed at this point.
At this point, it has to stay sealed, so we don't discuss it.
Yeah, what, so to give him, because he's at a disadvantage right now.
Yeah.
Because it's already been out there once. So it's very unfortunate, I'm not happy about it.
But this was not a housing authority mistake?
No, I'm not happy about that.
And what, would you say what the letters stand for?
Oh, Regional Capital Assistance Team. So that was a program that EOHLC put into place many years ago, where they, they were supposed to assist small housing authorities that didn't have capital teams to do, do small projects. Hadley has a contract, Beltratown has a letter of understanding, and then when we had the prior director of facilities, Amherst, we said, oh, you know, we'd like a little assistance.
Yeah.
Now that we have John Williams, I, once he's fully up to speed, where how we file everything, where everything is, John came from RCAT, and he was also a supervisor at another housing authority. So he, he's used to capital projects, he's got a construction license, he's.
So we're going to bypass RCAT?
With your permission, I would love to in the future.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll talk about that later, but that's where this is going. It's, to me, it's why hiring the most qualified and experienced staff is a benefit to all the housing authorities and management agreements with, with Amherst, because it's just a benefit.
Yeah. Could you apply for CPA money to cover that project, instead of going the way that you just?
We could, but CPA isn't going to get awarded until I, the, the request. has to be in by the fall, early fall.
No, no, it's it's August the first for the fall, the town meeting, and for the special town meeting that occurs at the beginning of May, the applications for CPA have to be in by February 1st.
Oh, so you have two, there's two in?
There's two. February 1st, we we do two. February 1st, August the 1st. In some rare instances, they will take late applications, but again, then that money that's coming from the town, we may not get it for a while. That's the problem. CPA has to be done, you know, basically you're in advance of when you're gonna need it.
Right, and the town votes on it, so it's gonna. And I do plan on requesting some CPA funding for the door project that we have coming up here, so that'll.
We're gonna get new doors.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so we need to vote on something.
Yep, so I need a motion to cancel the project one.
Was to cancel the contract?
Cancel the contract 117084.
I move that we cancel the project 117084, the ARPA chimney repairs.
And go out to.
And go out to rebid. Second?
I'll do the second.
And then I'll, any further discussion?
No discussion.
Call for a vote? Unanimous at three zero? Okay. Now, we are done with everything. We're down to policy drafts. So I gotta say, when I looked at the agenda today, we had had flowerbed and common area draft. These are draft. We're not voting on the final policy because there's too many things we have to go through on this. So we're just looking at the common area policy today. We'll pick up flowerbed policy later, but this is gonna be a meaty thing. And I will also say, we're gonna, we might vote on various elements of it, but this has already gone through the tenant meeting.
The tenant, I I look, so you actually could, if you if you.
Oh, okay.
If anybody was comfortable, you could vote on it.
Okay, great, because there's some housekeeping to be done on this. It's not in its final form.
Did the tenant, did they have any comments?
Yes.
They didn't, it was it was incorporated into this.
Except I found out we left a few of their things out. That's why I'm saying.
Oh, I didn't have that on my mind.
I had it on my notes, and somehow or another, we didn't get it in this final draft kind of thing. But so we had, I believe it was 12 or 13 tenants at the tenant meeting. That was at the time, we had 35 occupied units, so whatever percentage, so we had like 33, little more than 33% of the tenants showed up and and made comments, and I have to say, I was kind of surprised. They overwhelmingly liked this.
They really did.
And in fact, there were things that that I was surprised that they said, like, one of them was, so on here, it allows tenants to store tools in the back flowerbed, and one of the tenants made a comment, but tools can be used as weapons. They should be inside the house.
That was me.
That was you?
Yeah, and I took it, so that's why I took it out.
Oh, it's not in here?
No, I took that out.
Oh, okay, great. So there was a, oh, so this is, this is the, okay, the one that was sent to me still had all my yellow highlights and a.
Oh, no, I took, yeah, I took.
You took them out? Great, great, okay. So let's just go through this then. So just as a history, Rich and I worked on this god, what was it, like, felt like a year. We worked on this a year. We used a template from a university for policies and procedures that might, if it works out well, Pamela, maybe we can use it going forward when we review policies or revise policies. So the purpose is prevention and mitigation of obstructions to prevent injuries and provide tenant, staff, guests, emergency service providers, vendors, and contractors safe, unhindered access to and use of common areas. So the policy statement is tenants shall not obstruct any common area nor shall they store items in common areas. And the common areas are the community building, porches, stoops, ramps, sidewalks, walkways, asphalt paths, clotheslines, lawns, flowerbeds, parking lots, and service driveways. All areas of the property outside the tenant's unit are common areas and the property of HHA, that's Hadley Housing Authority. Areas designated for Hadley Housing Authority staff use are not common areas and may not be accessed or used by tenants for any purpose. And then a list of those areas. The policy is tenants shall not place ornaments, bird feeders, plant containers, furniture, or structures on lawns as doing so impedes lawn care operation, operations creates a fall hazard and obstructs access. So.
I would take that chair.
Yeah.
I think I would take bird feeders out there since we addressed it, I think in line G.
Okay.
I missed that, so I can remove that.
So we've removed the bird feeder in 4A. So 4A1 is items on the lawn shall be removed immediately by the tenant. Number two, Roman numeral two is Hadley Housing Authority shall immediately remove and discard any item on the lawn and submit written notification to the tenant if identity is known. 4B is tenants shall not obstruct asphalt paths, parking lots, walkways, sidewalks, or clothesline areas with any item, including but not limited to pots, stools, containers, storage bins, shopping, laundry carts. Roman numeral one, Hadley Housing Authority shall submit written notice of violations to the tenant within three business days of reported violation. Roman numeral two, items obstructing common area shall be removed within 72 hours of notification by Hadley Housing Authority. Items not removed shall be discarded by Hadley Housing Authority. Roman numeral, I'm sorry. 4C, clotheslines are removed by any tenant. Roman numeral one, tenants hanging items on clotheslines shall promptly remove items when dry air or within 24 hours. Roman numeral two, Hadley Housing Authority shall submit written notice of violations to the tenant within three business days of reported violation. Roman numeral three, tenants shall remove items obstructing within 24 hours of notification. Roman numeral four, items not removed within 24 hours shall be considered abandoned property and disposed of. 4D, tenants shall not store trash in common areas, including on or near porches or stoops. Tenant, Roman numeral one, tenants shall remove household trash from their unit directly into the dumpsters provided. Roman numeral two, Hadley Housing Authority shall submit written notice of violations to the tenant within three business days of reported violation. Roman numeral three, trash shall be removed within 24 hours of notification. 4E, tenants shall not discard furniture, mattresses, or appliances in or near the dumpsters or any common area. Again, a repeat of the 72 hours, three business days, removed by the tenant. Items not removed shall be discarded. On that one, because it's furniture, trash, I mean furniture, mattresses, or appliances, the tenants shall pay for all disposal fees, as well as hourly wages for staff and mileage to and from the disposal site. 4F, tenants shall not place any food items in on common areas for the safety of all wildlife to prevent the invasion of vermin and pests into the buildings and for the health and safety of tenants and staff on the housing authority property. Roman numeral one, Hadley Housing Authority shall submit written notice of violations to the tenant within three business days of reported violation. Roman, I'm sorry. 4G, alcohol and drug use. Tenants shall not consume any beverage containing alcohol or use any drug legal or illegal in or on common areas of the housing authority. We're gonna have a problem with this. Tenants shall not be in an intoxicated state in or on common areas of the housing authority. Roman numeral one, written notice within three business days. Roman numeral two, repeated instances, requesting a temporary restraining order. Roman numeral three, continued abuse, we will result in a notice to quit. Okay. I'm gonna star this for discussion. Okay. H, bird feeders shall be maintained by the tenant who has installed them, removing seed from ground located a minimum of 20 feet away from the building and require written permission from the executive director. We haven't, it does say, see bird feeder policy, that's rich. Hate to tell you, but your next year here is gonna be helping me. We're gonna work together.
Get the birds.
Get the birds.
Get the birds! Okay. 4I, tenants shall not affix electric lights or any electrical ornament or fixture, including extension cords in or on any common area or onto the exterior of buildings, doors, or windows. Battery-operated decoration is permissible as long as it does not obstruct common areas and is not affixed with nail screw screws or anything else that penetrates into the structure of the building, door, door frames, brick, window, window frames, or keys. Roman numeral one, barred items shall be removed within 72 hours of notification by HHA. Roman numeral two, items not removed shall be discarded. Tenants shall pay for all disposal fees, etc. 4J, tenants shall not attach ropes or hauntings to the buildings, gutters, roofs, trees, shrubbery, or fencing. Roman numeral one, again, items shall be removed within 72 hours of notification. Roman numeral two, items not removed shall be discarded, and tenants shall pay all disposal fees, etc. Okay. 4K, tenants shall be allowed a small outdoor table and two outdoor chairs on the side of the front porch closest to the front door of their unit unless ramps limit the space. All porches are shared spaces. Chairs, tables, or any other items must be placed within five bricks from the tenant's front door. However, in no case may any item obstruct a three-foot wide straight path from the walkway onto the porch stoop and through the door. 4L, tenants shall be allowed to place an entry rug on the floor of the porch and stoop at the front and back door. 4M, tenants shall be permitted a small outdoor, wait a minute, okay, a small outdoor table and two outdoor chairs. Okay. Near the back door between the stoop and the bathroom window or within the back flowerbed. Some units do not have this area available due to ramps or structural amenities. We should probably add that some units do not have this area available due to ramps and structural amenities on the one about the front table and chair, the front porch. I don't think we have it in there. It does say, unless plant ramps limit the space, but we probably should be. 4N, tenants shall be permitted to place potted plants on the small outdoor table allowed on the front porch and back porch. I'm gonna add porch there. However, in no, well, it's not even on the porch, so the front and back. In no case may any item obstruct a three-foot wide straight path from the walkway onto the porch stoop and through the door. 4O, tenants shall be permitted to maintain a garden in the front and back flowerbeds of the tenant's unit if present and or in the community garden behind the community building. And then in perennsico, report flowerbed policy, which is which is in draft room, and housing authority community garden policy, which is not yet written. So there's other policies that we're planning to do egress, flowerbed, community garden, wildlife, bird feeder, and the common space policy, which is what this is. So I would like to say that we have two tenants on the board. We're both gardeners. But when we serve on the Board of Commissioners, we have to look at policies in relation to what the legal and financial interests are of the housing authority. We got tenant input, the tenants overwhelmingly, Pamela, you have the tenant meeting, and the tenants present overwhelmingly were enthusiastically in agreement with this, and even came up with a couple of other things which are reflected in here now. So when we're sitting on the board as tenants, we have to put our tenant hat aside, and we have to address things as commissioners without any looking at how it would affect, say, me personally. I'm an avid gardener, and some of these things in here, I have to go, it's in the best interest of the housing authority to have these in the policy, even though it might be an inconvenience to me because I love to garden and I love flower pots and I love this, but the job of a commissioner is to do what's in the best interest of the housing authority legally and financially. Sue, comment?
I don't see, I have to talk emotionally. I find it very restrictive. I find it, I find it oppressive, and I find it much too long a policy. I feel this is something that, as I mentioned before, that would be seen at a detention center and not a scene during disabled housing. I think that it needs to be looked at. If it goes the way, because of the vote with me and the fact that you two vote the same, I'm sure it's gonna pass, and I think it has to be looked at by some sort of human rights commission, because I look at it as sort of being very restrictive and against basic human rights.
Okay, can I? So there would, there is a, there is a mechanism, once a policy is approved, that if you have a, if you disagree with that, that you can write to DHCD, and the policy in your disagreement goes to HLC, and they can, they'll arbitrate that, they'll they'll review it. The other thing I want to point out is that this is very similar to housing authorities' policies and other housing authorities, but it's also very similar to most condo associations and their homeowners association.
I understand.
There's cut.
Right, but it's. Just the length of it alone, to me, is oppressive.
Well, how you're using 14 type font, that's why it goes on for pages.
But oppressive and but oppressive.
Oppressive because of people, because you're making it, there's so many rules, people have to not enjoy their own space for fear that within 72 hours, people are maybe not. I do have the, I find it that personality-wise, we're different, you know, you're, of course, I would never agree to something like this. And I don't feel that DHCD necessarily, they're the only person that can arbitrate something like that. I don't know that I would, I think there would have to be somebody else involved above and beyond, along with DHCD. Because if this is how our policies are gonna be, pages and pages and pages, the thing is, I think that what you two are forgetting is we're disabled in elderly housing, and people are in their last stages of life, and they need to enjoy there. They need to enjoy their spaces and not have pages and pages. We already have a lot of rules and rules.
I want to make sure that you have all your comments that you can think of right now. Do you have anything else?
Not now, but I'm nauseous, I'll tell you that. Hearing it is, makes me wanna jump out of my chair and and.
Yeah, okay. So now it's my turn, and then we'll go to Rich. So what I have to say about this is there's nothing in the common area policy that has anything to do with what a tenant should be allowed to have, because the tenant does not rent the common area. This common area policy is primarily to protect other tenants from impediments and obstructions in the common areas. So for instance, the the common area is all the areas outside the inside of your unit, so or a tenant's unit. So a tenant is only renting the inside of their unit. They're not renting anything else. They have a lease only for the inside of their unit. And what has happened over the years is sometimes tenants start storing things or keeping things outside of their apartment, and it causes problems for staff, other tenants tripping over people's stuff that they've stored outside. We've had situations where people can't get through in their walkers or wheelchairs, or they can't access the clotheslines, or they can't because somebody is storing, say, blankets on the clotheslines, or leaving their laundry there for a month. uh, or leaving their laundry there for a month. Um, so the, so none of this is, is against any tenant. It's to make things safer for tenants, for staff, for EMS, for contractors, for, for our lawn maintenance people, our snow maintenance people. And we have to, because when we're talking legal liability, if we don't, as a housing authority, empower the staff to protect our contractors, we're gonna get sued. And that's where, where, uh, we have to act in the best interest of the housing authority to protect it legally and financially. So, so, it is now Rich's turn. Now, I, I give you lots of respect, Sue, and now it's Rich's turn.
There is nothing more I can say than you just did. The, the protection of the, the tenant, you know?
It's protection of the tenants.
Is there a certain area that, that bothers you here that you don't like?
It's just too lengthy, it's too restrictive, and it's not, it doesn't address quality of life. It, it just, you're looking at the worst-case scenarios. If somebody trips, if somebody fall, yes, all well and good, that's all valid points. But you need to have a policy that deals with quality of life also. And not just, you can't do this, you can't do that, you shouldn't do this, you shouldn't. Because that's not the way people wanna live in their senior and disabled years.
So, let me, are you finished?
I guess, well, right now, but-
Okay, so, we'll go around twelve times if we need to. So, are you, are you done for now?
For now.
Okay. So, you say quality of life issue, I, I'm gonna ask you a brief question. Just give me a sentence or two. What does that mean to you in relationship to the common area policy? Quality of life?
Which is counting even the number of pots, or it's just too restrictive. It's like you could have some pots, not two pots. Or you wanna, or, I mean, it's just, if you read through it, we could read through it line by line, and I would tell you what I object to. And the fact that I have lived here a long time, and so many, and other tenants have. And also, I can't understand how somebody like Richard, who's on our board, could relate to it because he goes back to his house where nobody tells him how many flower pots and how many. So, you're voting on something for people that you're not living that kind of lifestyle, is what it says.
I didn't get a turn.
Pamela, it's a turn. Okay, you're coming from a different place than us. You get a turn.
So, I, I, I take elbridge in that because, again, I'm telling you that, that when somebody lives in, where there's an HOA, they most certainly tell that. And then people living in their own homes have to follow the laws, the rules in town, as well.
And they tell, there's rules and there's overrules.
No, so, this is, this is just for clarification purposes. So, all the one, two, threes is the actions that, that, so that, one, the tenant knows it, but it also gives, puts the responsibility on the housing authority. So, I do, as the executive director, get complaints from other tenants about how things look or how people are acting outside. And if I say, if we didn't have this in place, I would say, it, for, just to use your example of how many pots. Well, you know, and again, you saying you're a resident, Ms. Oppenheimer, you have too many pots out. Well, what's the definition of some? Your sum is twelve, my sum is four. So, there's, this is defining it. And, and I, and I can remember when my parents elderly living in senior condo, a condo for fifty-five and older, that my mother got the letter in the mail saying, "You have twelve gargoyles." Twelve gargoyles out front, they gotta go. It's not allowed, it's too many. And she was deeply upset. I was thrilled. I don't like gargoyles, but, but you have to have some kind of boundary. So, it's not to be oppressive, it's to put everybody on the same page. The, the, the same page. Um, there's absolutely issues with the, that this housing authority pays for lawn care and snow removal. We get charged, you know, by the hour. So, they have to go around things, pick up things. That's a problem. If a doorway is blocked for, um-
EMS.
EMS or the fire department to go into a unit, that's a problem. Just like the inside, it's very regulated on the inside through both the state sanitary code and through our seven-sixty CMRs and releases, you know, proper egress inside part. That's why we need to have this outside.
I agree that other air, the condos and-
Okay, 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 hold on. I really need to keep some decorum here. You will get your opportunity. So, Rich, you kinda got cut off. You have anything more for now? You're okay?
I'm kinda curious about the, the alcohol.
Well, you've got, I'm gonna go ahead and skip to me because you've been talking a lot, okay? And then, we're gonna go around and get you again, okay? So, let's go to that, because I did circle that as an issue. Okay. Alcohol and drugs. My concern is this now says, "Tenants shall not consume any beverage containing alcohol or use any drug, legal or illegal." Okay, so, I remember you had said that the, uh, police chief or some, a law enforcement person told you it's still illegal to smoke pot in public.
That's what they said.
Geez. But, but they can't, they can't smoke pot or vape pot inside their unit either?
They may not, no.
Okay, so, this is saying that they can't vape or smoke pot anywhere on, inside, uh, inside their unit or anywhere on housing authority ground.
Right, so just go off the grounds. Go to the, the far area. Right, because I can't, I can't tell you, you can park, so, I was told by the police that, when they came for a call, that the, the smoking of marijuana, which I, I thought that the new law was you can have, there's a certain amount you can have legal-
Depending if it's medicinal or recreational.
Yeah, and even the medicinal is kinda like, you know, um, but it's a, that, that, that certain amount. So, I assumed that, that you could then smoke that in public. And the police officer, the Hadley police officer, who was here at the time for an incident, said, "No, you can't smoke it out in the open." I, I don't, I don't know, but we're saying, "No, you can't."
Okay.
He, he said, "No."
This is gonna be a huge problem.
But this is a huge problem.
It is a huge problem. But the people with medicinal marijuana-
Then they can ingest it.
Oh, my, okay.
They, there's enough, because there is, this is a non-smoking facility.
But that still won't make any sense because you say, "Tenants shall not," okay. "Tenants shall not consume any, or, or use any drug, legal or illegal." That would include ingesting, that's what I'm saying. This language is not gonna fly. Because I can, I can understand them not vaping or smoking inside their units. And I can understand that Hadley said, Hadley PD says, "You can't even, uh, smoke pot or anything outside your unit." Even though you're on private property.
Where is, what, now try to find this.
It's on page, oh, we don't have a page number here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that.
It's G, four G. Okay, so, the problem is, is from the housing authority's perspective, it'd be a lot better if people would just use edibles for marijuana for-
If they, if they have medical. So, if they have a medical, then, then the, the workaround for that is reasonable accommodation.
Okay.
They say, "My doctor says I have,"
And I, I meant to use this me, oh.
So, then, this, you would be able to do that, but then you better not be-
But not in a common area. They can do it, but not in a common area, is that what you're saying?
Well, because, so, we would ne- I would never give a reasonable accommodation for smoked. I just wouldn't. Because there's so many, it's medical, and there's other ways to take the medical. Um, I shouldn't say that. I, I, I'd have to have a lot of compelling evidence to give that. Um, if somebody is taking an ingestible through, of any kind of drug, I mean, if you're taking, uh, oxycodone, I, I believe that can give you almost an intoxicated effect. That's, that's, that's a prescription. That's different, that's not, that's not talking about that here. And I believe that would be the same thing as-
But it is legal or illegal.
I'm talking about marijuana, I'm talking about just the-
It doesn't say that. That's the problem. This particular paragraph says, "Any drug," including, it would include prescriptions because of the language here, legal or illegal.
So, do we wanna put marijuana? Because, I, I mean-
I think we, we, we have to take this out for now, send it to legal, and work through this. Because this is a problem.
No, it's not, we, there's a workaround.
Maybe the alcohol and drug use should not be part of the common area. It should be a policy of its own. We might-
That's a big, that's a big-
Otherwise, you're, it doesn't seem to be-
No, because that's the other problem we've, we've dealt with, with the police and, and multiple of the housing authorities, is that if we're not defining that, it's, that the common area is not your rented space, then people can do whatever they wanna do. But you can't have, take that alcohol or that, that marijuana and go onto the green and start drinking-
Yeah, I think that-
So, it's, it's open container.
I think we need to look into this further. I, I just see some problems coming with this, so.
But that would, it would be in a reasonable accommodation. I mean, if you wanna take out, if you wanna change the verbiage to, um, using any drug, right, I mean, do you, it's, the problem with listing them all is saying, you, so you can't do heroin, you can't do Percocet, you can't do mushrooms, you can't, it's, it's, you can't do drugs. We're not talking-
But you're, you're not saying, uh, I mean, medical marijuana, you can get a medical marijuana card, but you're not gonna find a doctor prescribing medical marijuana. Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, it's really difficult.
No, but I get reasonable accommodations if people say I have medical marijuana.
Right.
And then I would approve, I would approve that.
Okay, but not smoking, only-
Not smoking, yeah.
Not smoking. And not vaping?
Correct. Because that's against the, the, the not-smoking policy.
But even people who are, you know, ADHD or ADD drugs, we're not talking-
We're not talking-
So, I mean, that's a drug, that's a, that's a controlled substance. So, you have to, you're getting into a-
The way this is written, I mean, the way this is written-
Right, but so, what about, what about somebody that's just buying somebody's ADHD ritalin?
That's illegal. That's illegal.
But it's still an illegal drug.
But, but that's what I'm saying. We need to do something with this language because it's not, uh, it's gonna cause us problems, I think, legal problems. Because we say legal or illegal. And you're trying to catch the medical marijuana-smoking people.
No, I'm, I'm really just trying to keep people from being intoxicated and causing problems out in the common area. That's what I'm trying to do.
So, maybe we should-
If everybody behaved, we wouldn't know that.
I know, right?
And, and this won't even come into, into play unless somebody's misbehaving.
Exactly, exactly.
So, then, that's, that's where we're gonna, so, if, so, say I have an altercation between two, two residents, and, um, the, uh-
Which we have.
Oh, sure, ab- absolutely. And then they go like this, and the cops come, and the cops go, "He's intoxicated." She's intoxicated, whichever. This comes, now this comes into play. That's when it comes into play. Or when I see a resident walking across, or, I, should I say, staggering across the parking lot, holding a, a wine glass.
Right, right.
That's when this comes into play. Other than that, it's-
How about if there's, if we're having a picnic outside or a cookout outside, and you have beer and wine? You can't even have that.
No.
So, nobody here as an adult can have alcohol at their, at a party even. We know we can't have it in here.
So, how many parties are we having?
There are a bunch of little cookouts and parties that are-
Okay, so, hold on, right, hold on. This isn't an open discussion. We still have to go around to maintain decorum, and we're getting off track here. So, um, I think we need to, we got a lot more questions about this. But we could, I know, but you do, I don't. I know you don't.
I don't.
I know you don't. I have a question about the, some of the language because I think it might cause us legal problems.
Legal problems how?
Because it says, "Legal or illegal in or on common areas." And it doesn't say, uh, it do- it, it says, "Tenants shall not be in an intoxicated state," but it doesn't say, "This will only be enforced if the police say you're intoxicated." Do you, do you see what I'm saying? We've got too many people taking medication that their doctors prescribe that, but, but we're-
Truly not talking about prescription medication.
But we're not saying that, because we are saying legal or illegal.
So, right, we're saying legal because of marijuana being legal. Other than that, anything-
But it doesn't say that.
Then, so, we say, including legal marijuana.
But it's still not legal according to federal government, it's only-
Well, we're, we're only dealing- We are a state housing, so we, that's where we kinda get our way around that. Uh, if this was federal housing, it would not be allowed at all.
At all.
Even with a medical marijuana card. Not, it's not allowed. So, I mean, if you wanna change that to, um, any drug, um, including legal marijuana.
You can't say, "Or any drug, including legal marijuana," because then you have-
Right, but do you want me to list all the illicit drug? I feel like, I, I almost, I don't mean to be a smart aleck, but I'm thinking of when John Quill came to my classroom when I was in grade school, with the boxes, the, the pill boxes-
No, no, no.
Saying, "These are all the, you know, don't, when somebody hands you PCP, don't do that," or, you know, it's just-
Why don't we just come back to this at another time?
Because we're in June, because we're in June, and this is important.
Okay.
Because it's, it's already-
Coming into summer, so it's already, and it's bad in the summertime. So, let me, let me, can we come back to the, let's get through everything else and come back to this, and that'll give me time to-
Illicit drugs?
Well, you can't, illicit is too generic. Uh, you can't say illicit, because it, that's, that's a legal term. It's not even a legal term, it's under inter- illicit is under interpretation.
Right, but so, any of this that is here would have to hold up in court.
Exactly.
Right, but, but I trust myself and my staff that we're not gonna take grandma into court for taking marijuana.
Okay. And what I'm, what I'm saying is, it has to be specific. I think when you get to housing court on some of these things, it needs to be so specific that the judge says, "Yeah, this is a very clear policy." The out, as it's written right now, I even have questions.
You can't, you can't put every minute detail into it.
No, you shouldn't. So, "Tenants shall not consume any beverage containing alcohol or use any, uh, you could say, illegal drugs." And then say, uh, uh, say, "Or smoke or vape marijuana." And that way, you don't have to worry about the ritalin and grandma's ritalin, okay? Or whatever, you know? Because some of the drugs that people take, even innocuous stuff, can make them appear to be inebriated or, you know? And they're not, they're, it's just-
That's not, that's not who we're worried about.
I know, but it doesn't say that, and that's the problem. It doesn't say that. It, it, it needs to be so well-defined that grandma and grandma's family know that grandma's not gonna be targeted if she's staggering to the flagpole because she's on Parkinson's medication. Do you see what I'm saying?
So, but, so then, what would grandma be doing that the housing authority would then go, because the housing authority, I, I have trained staff.
I know, no, I know, and I'm not casting aspersions on the staff. The staff is brilliant. I'm just saying, there are, okay, I'm a nursing background. I'm looking at this going, there's all kinds of drugs that would cause grandma or a handicap person to appear to be inebriated when they are in fact not.
Right, but the purpose of this is to make sure that people are not drinking in, in, in common areas. And not doing drugs in common areas. And then are not coming into the housing authority, driving their cars intoxicated into the housing authority or under the influence of drugs. We have had people that-
I know, absolutely.
Not grandma, not here.
Are you talking about front porches? And also, and back porch, I mean, stoops, that, that's-
Those are common areas.
Those are common areas.
That's a tricky, it's a tricky area.
Very tricky and very-
Wait, because it, so part of, part of me wants to say, oh, yes, you can have a glass of wine on your front stoop.
Beer.
Or, sure, you can have an alcoholic beverage on your front stoop. But we have so many people that have alcoholism, which is now a disease. And I have folks in court that I'm now having to make agreements, and behavioral agreements, that it's, it's triggering to other people more than, you know, it's, you know, do you not have a wine glass? Do you use some? I don't know. It's just, it's, there's a, there's a big problem in this community.
There is a problem. With that, I don't, you know, looking at a problem, looking at something being obstructed or a problem with somebody, you know, drinking outside their apartment, I think that's sort of black and white thinking. We have to look at more like shades of gray thinking, something in between, the black and white. Okay. Because that's what I'm talking about. There's too many things on here that are, no, not shades of gray, it's black, it's white.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna table this for now, and we'll come back to this pair, this 4G in a few minutes. All right? So Sue, do you have any other comments about any of the rest of this?
Other than majority of them I'm not thrilled about, and I'm not happy with at all. But as I said, having three people on the board, and the fact that you two often ninety-nine percent vote the same, I'm gonna be out of it anyway.
That's very disrespectful.
But I mean, that's the way it is, it's the reality, it's, it's a reality.
That's very disrespectful.
And you asked me what I thought, I'm telling you. I'm telling you.
About the policy.
Right.
Do you have any other comments specific to this tracked version?
Nothing more.
Okay. Is there anything here that, that? I mean, we, this policy defines what the common area is, which we really haven't ever had before. And we need to define it because legally and financially, the housing authority has to have this, the common area defined. So the, this policy defines the common area and actually allows tenants to place a table and two chairs and a couple of pot of plants on the common area. So. It actually allows tenants to do things that other housing authorities don't permit. Other housing authorities don't permit.
I don't make care what's happening here, not other houses.
Well, but.
I live here, and so do other people, I mean, so do you. So I'm more concerned about what's happening right here.
I have to, and you have to. We're tenants on the board. But we have to set the tenant cap aside. And even though we're both avid gardeners, we have to set that aside and look at what's the best interest of Hadley Housing Authorities legally and financially.
If you want to look at, if you want to look at things only legally and financially, that's fine.
Well, that's the law for a commissioner.
Oh, sure, but I mean, there's other, there's other.
There's nothing else when you're sitting at this table is legal financial policies, which we're working on right now, and oversight of the ED. That's it. And you have to set your tenant cap aside and take yourself out of the equation.
Yes.
All right? Yourself as a tenant. Because your responsibility as a commissioner is to the Hadley Housing Authority, not to how many pot of plants and stuff you want to keep.
No, not just me, I'm looking at other people's.
It doesn't matter.
It's Rich's turn.
It's Rich's turn.
I'm good with the policy. We went through it, we started it.
Yeah.
And this alcohol one, you gotta go back to that one.
Yeah. I am going to call for a five-minute recess, Nick. Nick, I'm gonna call for a five-minute recess because we've been going an hour and twenty minutes, and I can't last that long. You know? So can we come back together in five minutes?
Sure.
And we are, I didn't hear any other concerns about anything. We deleted the word bird feeders on 4A because we're addressing it later. And the only other. I, I think that 4K and 4M are sufficiently clear. Pamela, what do you think about the ramps and structural amenities?
Yeah.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing, well, what I'm actually seeing is that alcohol and drug use are a problem here. It's, it's only really a few people, and it's, it, it's not a large number of people. But there are a few people that have a, a disease, right? And it does cause behavioral issues. I do have concerns about the specific language used, just specifically legal or illegal without defining what legal drugs are not allowed. Like if you put smoking or vaping marijuana in public, I think it would be more clear because you're not really talking about grandma's Ritalin, right?
No, not at all.
Not at all. So if we somehow were clearer, I think we can stop the smoking and the vaping of marijuana. And it does, it bothers other tenants to smell it, it really does.
Well, we have, we have not smoking, so it's, it's against the smoking policy.
No, I'm talking about outside twenty feet away, because they're allowed to smoke cigarettes, twenty.
I thought it was thirty feet.
Whatever, twenty-five feet. The original was twenty, twenty-five feet. Somehow in the policy, it got written down as thirty, but I was part of all those, and it was supposed to be twenty or twenty-five feet. But it, it was supposed to be commensurate with the state law, which is either twenty or twenty-five feet. But somehow it got written down as thirty in the policy. So the, the smoking, anything causes problems with other tenants. Marijuana or tobacco or whatever, it causes problems. And what this is trying to focus on is people who are intoxicated and drinking or taking drugs in the common areas, which include port, front porches and back porches.
So can I make a, just maybe discuss a revision? So if we go back to the, where the tables and chairs are, and just sort of clean that up, we're gonna make them the same, but I would also move the M to L and the L to M. So that the, the table areas are together, and then we go to rocks. So that aside. And then with the alcohol use, then perhaps we change this because it, it, it is not in a detention camp.
No.
And, and adults should, should be able to regulate themselves, and some people can't, we understand that.
Yeah.
But perhaps we change the, it to saying alcohol use is confined to the areas listed in K and L. So it would be your stoop and your tables and your chairs.
Oh.
And then, and no tenant shall not be in intoxicated, so we're saying.
K and M, you mean?
Yeah, and we're gonna change the.
Oh, we're gonna change now, okay.
So it's gonna be confined to your stoop and your chair and your table. And then, and then at no time shall you be in an intoxicated state. So you drink, and you drink what you want to drink, but just don't get drunk and don't cause problems.
Yeah, I think we have to include in this the people who have.
Thank you.
Who have signs on their door or windows that they're on oxygen, but they're still smoking because of the chances of the apartment exploding, it's a very.
Well, they, they shouldn't be smoking, if they're smoking in their apartment, that we should be advised of that.
Of people visiting or smoking.
So this is a big, you're worried about, you know, okay, worst case scenario, that's a big, that's a big worst case scenario.
But that would be a violation of the non-smoking policy.
Yeah.
Because they shouldn't be smoking there.
We are.
But you, but you're talking about smoking and alcohol.
Sue, Sue, can we limit, please, to what we're dealing with right now?
To me, I'm looking at, ask something that's.
Okay, but right now, we're looking at number G.
Right.
Let's stick with number G. Pamela, you, you were in the middle of.
So, so tenants may consume beverages containing alcohol limited to the areas.
Are, are we getting rid of drug use?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Limited to.
They may consume beverages.
But Pamela was speaking right now, just, I'm just talking.
Outlined in K and M. Oh, it's actually gonna be K and M, because we're gonna move.
Okay, you're gonna move whatever.
Okay. Tenants shall not be in intoxicated state in, in or on common areas.
That's perfect.
At any time.
That's perfect.
And again, it's, so when somebody calls and says there's a problem, that's when we, we, there's a problem. And then.
Because that's really what we want to do, is stop people wandering around intoxicated. Right?
Well, the other thing, I, I guess, so now that I've argued enough about it, maybe just take out the drug use because if somebody is smoking legal marijuana or unless you want to get rid of legal marijuana smoking. But if they're doing illegal drugs, then the police would arrest them for doing illegal drugs. And then that's, that falls under somewhere else.
Yes.
So I don't need to regulate that.
We don't, we don't have to reg, because, yeah.
So do you want to talk about smoking marijuana or no?
I think it's covered under the smoking policy.
Okay, yeah, and that's, and, and the people that are smoking marijuana are adhering to that.
They are.
That I'm aware of.
That I'm aware of. I mean, like I said, we're always gonna get, and I cannot tolerate marijuana smoke personally. And I even once in a while waft, smell it wafting, you know, in the air. But I also realize that most everybody here that smokes marijuana has a medical reason for doing it.
And, okay, so alcohol use, tenants may consume beverages containing alcohol limited to the areas outlined in K and L. Tenants may not be in an intoxicated state in or on common areas on, common areas of the LHA at any time. Tenants' use of alcohol in other, or in other common areas. This is not their, this is not their space.
Yeah.
Will. Is, is prohibited.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, so when the tenant is walking across the street, staggering with their wine glass, that's the problem.
That's the problem.
Or when they, when they get into the, the other thing I see is a gaggle of people.
A gaggle of people drinking.
Drinking on the lawn. That's, you can't do that. You can't. That, I think that just needs a keg at that point.
Well, it's, it's that, it, it's not so much that they're sitting there drinking. It's the behavior that happens following.
Right, right.
Multiple problems here because of drinking.
Oh, yeah.
Just not down our end.
That's actually, absolutely, absolutely.
Really, because I never see any, anybody.
And there's neighbors and there's. And it just disturbs, everybody's quiet and joined. So if there's a couple of neighbors sitting around having a barbecue and having some beer and wine, and, and they're fine, no harm, no foul, everybody.
Yeah.
But when it starts getting rowdy, or, and they disturb the peace, or they start heckling people going by, then that's.
You know what? You just reminded me, and you said barbecue, we need to address that outdoor grill thing. Because there, we've got some weird stuff about outdoor grill in the policies and procedures, we need to, to incorporate that.
That is, okay, is that a separate policy somewhat?
I think it is.
So we could always add that.
We can add it, yeah.
To this, or reference it. And then change, again, they're not, you know, they're always up for revision.
Always, yeah.
Oh. Speaking of trouble. Come on in, we're having a board meeting, but I'd love to.
Are you?
This is Michael from TPP, Tenant Preservation Program.
Come on in and have a seat.
Wow, this was scary, I was actually stopping in just to say hi, too.
Yeah, we're, we're wrapping up, I think, so.
Wow, this is the board meeting, huh?
Yeah, yeah. We were actually, we were just talking, so Michael helps us with these things.
Have, have a seat, right here. Monkey, run, run, here's the topic, I'll double run.
No, really, let's have.
Well, it's, it's a common space, it's a common space, um, policy that we're working on.
So nice.
Thank you.
It is, yeah.
I don't think I've noticed it, I've only been here like twenty-five times.
Oh, wait a minute, we have to have a.
Skip your door.
Is it a, okay, Sue, we have to have a vote. Is it a, I move that we allow, tell me your name.
Michael Richell.
Say it again.
Michael Richell.
I'm not gonna try to pronounce that loud, but, but anyway, that we allow him to speak at the board meeting? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Off second?
Fine, be.
Okay, pass three to zero. The floor is yours, sir.
Awesome, so what I do is I help preserve tenancies. I work with you guys and all the property managers to help solve whatever problems may be causing a tenancy. And it also works the other way around as well. If it's unsolvable, I also report that as a neutral third party to every case.
But Michael has a ton of resources, a ton of knowledge. He's helped several of our tenants here in Hadley. They've both preserved their tenancy. He assisted us moving a very needy family from Hadley into Amherst for various reasons.
Better services, yeah. Okay, so is it okay if I, if we can go through? Because he might have some really good things to say.
Well, I wouldn't go through the whole policy.
No, no.
I think the one, what we're really, that we're, we've just kind of retweet is, in the commentary, is the use of alcohol in common areas. And the problems that it causes. Initially, we had it written that there'd be no alcohol use. We have two members, two tenants on the board, and we're all adults, so we have all, like an occasional glass of.
Not men, I hate this stuff. Don't use that beer.
I mean.
Huh?
Beer, that's misery.
Uh-uh.
So you, you want to allow alcohol?
So now we're saying, you can have it on your, like on your stoop or at your table, but at no time can you be in an intoxicated state.
Okay.
So hoping that that would keep people from.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, sit outside, having a little drink, and then going back inside.
Right.
And not yelling at your neighbor or causing problems.
So I actually ran into this with a young lady, I say young, but she's like ninety years old. So just to play, just to show you the other side of things, they allowed people to Mrs. Folio Housing, drink outside. And this young lady happens to be an alcoholic, and I've worked with her, and she's been really, really good ever since, but her and three of her friends would go out there and basically try to molest all the males that walked by. Like, yeah, I'm, I'm not talking like, hey, cutie, I'm. So since then, they still allow it, but now it's, it's written like that where you can't be in an intoxicated state outside of your unit. You know? And it seems to be working. I was like, listen, if you and your girls want to go have a toddy downstairs, by all means. But the minute it turns into three or four, now you need to take it back to your apartment and plant your butt on your couch and drink your, she drinks forties at ninety years old.
So, I don't know how a liver's functioning, talking from a nursing background, I don't know how that's happening, but. So maybe we, you know, you can, we have to define common area. It's anything outside your apartment. But we're considering saying you can sit at the table and two chairs we allow you to have on your front and back porch to, that you can, you know, have your, whatever you call it, highball or alcohol beverage or whatever, sitting out there. But you can't walk with that whatever, bottle of beer across the parking lot or on your front lawn. You can't sit out on your front lawn throwing them back.
Right.
So what do you feel about having a cookout or a picnic where people have alcohol at the picnic? Like a keg or their own beer? Because to me, it's normal.
They've done it here, honey, I'm sorry.
Not having it after, you know, I think that is very important.
So my opinion on that would be like, get permission, let people know.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So if you have a problematic tenant that decides to have a barbecue, and it doesn't have anything to do with like the property, you're not doing like a common property place. So I live here, and I want to have a bunch of friends over and have a keg outside. That, I don't see anything good coming from that. You know what I mean? But now say you're having like a localized barbecue and. and there happens to be people with coolers drinking beers. That might be one thing, but that's like, that could be a permission-based way of doing it. You know, it's like, hey, just let the office know, see what everybody thinks.
Like rent a community room or rent the, or just no alcohol in the community?
Yeah.
But what about out there or something like that, or no, no alcohol?
Because then you're taking the responsibility of that. Keeping it at their units and making that stoop part of their space, you know, that takes you and your stuff out.
But hold on. The way we have this written now, say, I would never do this, but say, I was sitting out there. I invited a couple of friends over. Somebody grabbed a chair from their place, and we're sitting on the front or the back porch, and we're knocking them down. Well, sometimes it's just sit, just so you know.
Okay, she's always knocking down.
I don't drink alcohol.
She doesn't drink.
But anyway, I'm just using the parlance I've heard in my notes, you know what I'm saying? So I'm sitting there. I'm allowed to do that, but my two neighbors aren't because...
No, no, no. They're your guests. They're in their space. Yeah, and Sue's saying about, like, a little party or a barbecue in the backyard. You're allowed that in that space. I mean, no one's going to come over and say to you, you stepped 12 inches over the lawn. No, we won't.
You might not, but somebody will.
No, but when you start yelling at your neighbor or causing problems, and the police come back, and it's a problem.
That's the issue.
That's the problem. This says, have fun, have a nice barbecue, but be an adult and control yourself.
Right, but I think, talking about policies, I think we always look at the worst-case scenario, like she said, legally and financially, because we're tenants, but we're also on the board. But then I said there has to be...
You have to all tenants.
But there also has to... I'm a tenant. Sue's a tenant. Rich is not a tenant.
So I agree that because of the fact we're on the board, but we're also a tenant, and you have to look at things legally and financially. But I said you also have to look at things in a humanistic way, too. We, I find that a lot of policies, especially since this is the first policy we're sitting and doing, I feel, I find that it's too long, that it's too restrictive, and that it's not something that makes life in a senior and disabled housing enjoyable at all. Not in a sense that there's none of it.
Okay, so, right.
Yes, if I could just correct you, this is not the first policy we've done.
No, I'm talking about sitting...
Right, but if you look at our language policy, our fair housing policy, our reasonable accommodation...
Because that was already written by the state.
And their pages.
Right, their pages.
Pages and pages.
Policies, I mean...
I'm talking about the first time we've sat down.
No, no, Sue.
I've never seen a policy.
Right, because you've only been on the board a year.
Well, I think that's a long time to not see a policy.
Yes.
I mean, see it drag...
We're going on 12...
Yeah, we are going to, I am going to say I would like a motion to vote on this policy with the modifications that Pamela has suggested, knowing that a policy is a living document and can be revised if needs be. We will get feedback, we'll get legal feedback eventually from housing court about anything, you know.
Yeah, if it gets, if we...
If it ever gets from housing court, but we will...
That's like worst-case scenario right there.
No, no, of course it is. But what I'm saying is, we have an attorney, and we will be getting feedback from tenants who've already overwhelmingly approved this one anyway. We had the tenant meeting. They loved it. They especially loved that it requires the housing authority to act. That's not what we had before. It was just tenants have to do this, but there wasn't any rationale behind it on most of our policies. And this requires the housing authority to do something within three business days to remove obstructions and prevent falls and stuff like that. So I digress. So I would like a motion to vote on this policy as modified by Pamela.
And the board.
And the board, with all the changes we've incorporated, and you've got all your notes there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I will ask for a second.
Do we accept?
Okay, and Sue, would you like a second?
No.
Okay, I'll second. Now, call for the vote. Approved, and...
No.
Are you voting?
I'm voting no.
Okay, so it passes two to one, with Sue as the dissenting vote.
So Reese said we'll make the revisions and get it over to you for your signature.
Okay, wonderful.
But we'll do it as a...
So now, board correspondence, I only have, ooh, I think it's one thing. I did receive, I think it was this morning or yesterday morning, after all this, like, we're going on an hour and 40 minutes here. So I received some information that we will likely be having an applicant for a vacant commissioner spot probably pretty soon. I mean, of course, we have no control over that. That's someone in the town is interested in serving on this Board of Commissioners, and they make an application to the Select Board, who then notifies us, and then we go, Pamela and whoever wants to, from the Board of Commissioners, to the Select Board meeting. The Select Board interviews candidates. It will be for a one year, the first year of a five-year term. And then next spring, they will have to run for the four year of that, the remaining four years of that particular seat next month. So it's for a one-year appointment by the Select Board. The Board of Commissioners will have parity votes with the Select Board, is how my understanding of how it works. So we await to see if an application is indeed made, and will be contacted by the Chair of the Select Board. Okay, so that's a happy news. The other thing is regarding our former Chair, David Moskin. I, he sent an email this morning that he couldn't attend today. That's three board meetings he has missed. He has not yet made the decision whether to remain as the... And he just notified me this morning. So he has not made the decision yet whether or not he will continue or ask to be reappointed as the Governor's appointee. So he needs to decide whether or not to formally resign, which then frees up the spot for someone else, or agree to another period of time, but he has to make application with the Governor. And that's a new thing that Governor Healy is doing now, is if you want to be a Governor's appointee, there's a whole application process. We still wait. He is kept as, according to state law, he is a holdover. He just hasn't attended the past three meetings. Or he left after three minutes of the one on April 9th. So we're still waiting to hear about that. That's all I have for board correspondence, for Commissioners' discussion. I think that's all I have for board correspondence.
Yeah.
Okay, so for Commissioners' discussion, our next meeting date is scheduled for June 25th at 11:00 a.m. I am proposing that we go ahead and schedule for planning purposes July, Tuesday, July 30th, 2024 at 11:00 a.m. Is that okay with you all?
I can't tell either one of them.
You don't even live in Hadley. You can't serve. Okay.
When is it, July?
July 30th at 11:00 a.m. Oh, I know what I wanted to ask you. Do we have dates for annual plan presentation?
We do.
Oh, okay.
I think that's the 25th, June 25th.
Right, Pam?
Yes. That's when we're already scheduled for a board meeting.
Yeah.
Right, right, it's part of the board meeting.
Wonderful.
Two birds, one stone.
I love that.
Going to the bird theater.
And the tenant, the tenant, the tenant meeting I saw is scheduled for this Friday.
That's a different, that's a different meeting.
But it's not, it's not about talking about capital improvements and stuff?
It's just a tenant chat.
Okay, it's a tenant chat, okay. So we done with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. 5B is whether to change meeting format from in-person to either live video or hybrid. So we had talked about, we need to do this for, because the feedback from people that might be interested where they cannot come to in-person meetings. So we need to either do live video
Which would be Tuesday.
Or we need to do a hybrid. So people who want to come can. And so I'll start at the left. Sue, your comments?
I'd be interested in hybrid.
Oh, wait a minute. I have to make the motion.
We'll make the motion. We do a hybrid.
Hybrid?
Hybrid.
You want a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Nothing?
Wait.
Nope, I'm on set.
Why are we doing hybrid?
I prefer just live video and not the hybrid because it's a lot of trouble to do hybrid meetings. It's just a huge amount of trouble.
Well, you have your option to come in person then.
I understand that.
Right, so what, why isn't on the agenda then?
It's on the agenda because the feedback I got from people who might be interested serving on the board is they cannot leave work to come to an in-person meeting, but they can get an hour or so off, you know, so that they can do a meeting, well, you know, on video.
So we, so I have, in Amherst, we have a Commissioner who oftentimes needs that. But what we do is we just send them an invitation. So we say the rest of the board meets, and then that, so I don't think we have to go to live. And then I believe this is live, right?
No.
No, it's, so it's, people can watch this way, too.
So can we do that, like, if we're, if we have in-person meetings, but one person needs to appear by video?
Zoom, yeah.
Zoom?
Teams, yeah.
Can we do, I mean, how are we going to see them on a screen and interact with them?
Well, we have the screen, but that would be just for the Commissioner. I don't, I would recommend that we don't open it up to the public.
The Zoomy part, okay. And that we just, okay, but will that person's face appear on the video feed?
Not unless we set up a screen, but it doesn't have to. I mean, you hear the person.
Most likely, people are going to attend in person unless it's another epidemic.
Well, as I said, we are 330% increase in COVID virus in wastewater right now.
Well, but if we get to that point, we can go back to hybrid.
We are at that point.
No, if we, if we get to a point where people are contaminating, we can go back to hybrid. But it is extra work at this point.
It is. It's a lot of extra work doing hybrid.
And out of the three housing authorities, you are the only one that has the public access.
I know, right, yeah. Okay, so if a Commissioner is sick or cannot leave work to attend, they can appear via feed. Does that work for you, Nick?
I, yeah, I'm an employee.
I'm putting you on the spot.
I'm just an employee, so, I mean, yeah, I guess whatever. We'll go.
We'll go with whatever, okay. So, well, so can you remake the motion to say we are in-person meetings with video feed accommodation for people unable to attend, for Commissioners unable to attend?
You just said it.
Okay, I'll make that motion. You second it? Okay, vote?
Yes.
Okay, three to zero. Items for future agenda. Sue, you have two things. One was you want an explanation in detail of the administrative fee.
No, it's new. I mean, according to...
No, 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 it's not new.
No, according to the reading through the notes here, it talks about...
Sue, did you say you want an explanation of the administrative fee?
I gave an explanation of it.
I know.
No, not the fee itself, about the fact that it's new, and this is the first time you're critiquing of it.
No, because it's in the minutes.
No, what was new was the, this could have gone under Commissioners' court thing. What was new is that it's getting board approval. So that's been in place actually since...
Obviously, really through these minutes, it didn't say just the board.
Right, but the board minutes are in Hadley are transcript verbatim. So that may be confusing. So it's, since COVID, they're requiring board vote, and that's new.
Yeah, but the administrative fee has always been there.
Always been there.
Because otherwise, and this is what I said before, why ever would a housing authority take on that enormity of a capital project unless they got some money to recoup their losses and expenditures?
In time, yeah. It just, it helps soften the blow up of all that extra work. And we use it for the growth of the housing authority.
Yeah. Does that make sense? Do we need to again include this?
No, just reading through it and the way it's written.
Well, it's not the way it's written. It's a transcript.
It's a transcript. Not every party. I mean, 99%, there's some areas that isn't as hard exactly.
And what was the other item?
The other item was a question about my board correspondence of last meeting, April 30th, where I mentioned that you and I were going to Housing and Economic Development to give a presentation about pathways for creating more housing. Pamela didn't end up going. She had another obligation. So I went and just gave a brief thumbnail of some of the pathways for creating more housing.
But is this part of you being on the CPA committee?
This is above and beyond. It's not above and beyond or any, it has nothing to do with CPA. It has to do with public housing administrative notices coming out of EOHLC and HUD, okay? And it doesn't affect us yet, although hopefully, as things progress, we'll be able to look into it. But it's very early stages in this.
You keep us apprised of what happens.
Honey, have you ever seen me not keep you apprised?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're through items for future agenda. Unless, Rich, do you have any items for future agenda?
No, I don't.
We have, well, we do have a member of the public. Do you have any comments, sir?
No, ma'am.
Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
No, no, no.
Why?
I just can't, no.
The fact that it helps tenants, I just wanted to know.
He already said what he was from, and we need to get out of here.
See, they're already knowing me because I'm asking the question.
So he already said, just say the organization you're from.
Brookshire County Regional Housing Authority.
There you go, done. All right. So we have no members of the public other than our wonderful guest. And so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
No, no. Do I have a second, Miss Sue? Do I have a second?
Sure, with a second.
Okay, call for the vote. Let's get out of here.